I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. Very briefly, I will go through our agenda for this evening. We have the consent agenda, which will consist of the minutes from the February 11th meeting. And then we have two public hearings. The first is a conditional use permit for the Aspen Pet cremations. And the second is a conditional use permit for Lamar advertising on an electronic billboard. That's all we have on tap for this evening. The first item would be the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion.
We'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. And then we'll move into our public hearings. And again, let me briefly tell you how the public hearings work. First, I will open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city. The city will make a brief presentation. Then the applicant will make a presentation. We'll ask for witnesses to speak in favor and witnesses to speak opposed. And then we'll bring it back up here for general discussion before I close the public hearing. That being said, I open the public hearing on Aspen Pet cremations. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Hawley, would you make a presentation for the city, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I was trying to get rid of the sidebar up here, but it doesn't really matter that it's here or not. But I think I will proceed to the first site location map. And start by saying that, again, this is a conditional use, a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a crematorium in property at 3424 Northwest Duncan. It's located on the south side of Northwest Duncan. It's approximately 265 feet east of Woods Chapel Road or Demise. The zoning for this particular property is light industrial. It does allow for the cemetery use. You're going to hear or see in the staff report, or you have seen in the staff report, where it's sort of interchangeable, this idea of cemetery crematorium. The reason for that is because within the definition of cemetery in our UDC, crematoriums are included. So that's why you see that used interchangeably. The applicant is proposing to use an existing building, and they're looking at taking approximately 2,600 square feet of a 6,000-square-foot building. And the property is non-conforming. It's non-conforming by way of landscaping. It's non-conforming by way of curbing. And at this point, somewhat non-conforming by way of the parking configuration. The applicant's site plan.
We'll go to.
The applicant's site plan pretty much takes care of the parking configuration by putting an island in the medium up along Duncan Road and then adding some additional formal parking spaces. Excuse me. And as we go through the staff report, we'll talk about the other two items on this particular property. Somewhat of a difficult property because, again, it is an existing developed property. The building, obviously, is there, was previously used by the Department of Conservation. Currently, I think there was maybe a cable company had it for a while as well. And now currently, there's an electrician uses it as contractor storage building and portions of the yard. And again, they're taking then the 2,600 square feet up easterly portion of the building. Moving on to page four and five, and to talk about the landscaping, the applicant is requesting an alternative compliance landscaping plan. The two charts, the chart provided on the applicant's site plan and the chart provided within the staff report are somewhat different, and I will let the applicant explain the differences. But staff is recommending that the approved, that the approval apply to the site plan submitted by the applicant. Parking, again, as I said, he has both parking into compliance with the zoning code because a crematorium within our parking requirements does not have a specific number of parking spaces. It falls under, I think it's a Schedule C, which requires them to do a parking analysis. And they've provided information that says they will need roughly six off-street parking spaces. That seemed reasonable to us for the type of use that we're talking about. And they're proposing 12 parking spaces in total for both their use as well as the contractor The curbing on the east side of the property, currently, there is no curbing there because they have a drive aisle and some parking spaces along the northern portion of the east property line. The code requires that they supply curbing to that property line or along that driveway and along the parking. That is not something that the Planning Commission can waive. It's a code requirement. If they choose to want to not put that curbing in, that's something they would need to ask for obedience for. Hence, the condition, the lone condition of the staff recommendation discusses the curbing along that east property line. The applicant did provide technical information regarding some of the things that would immediately be of concern, and that would have to do with odors and some disposal issues. They can address those issues with you as they have with us in a meeting. But with that, I will stand for any questions that you might have and turn this over to the applicant to talk about some of those other issues.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? And you will need to be sworn in.
Do you sound as far as the test where you're about to give this case? I do.
I've enlarged the landscape plan. What we're planning to do here is to all this island, because as it stands right now, this entire area is a legal non-conforming parking area.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Make sure you're talking into the mic.
All right, I'll do that. Is that better? Okay. So we're adding this curb. And we have looked at the landscape requirements, and my matrix was a little different from the city because the existing condition of having a building on the property line, I used the area that was actually available for my buffers when I did my calculations. And even with that, I put in as many plant materials as I thought would make this property work. And so, as you can see, we've completely added a tree, and we've added additional landscaping, conifers, and we've added a lot of landscaping all along the west, which I think is important for the overall attractive community needs there. And we've added landscaping into the island that we've added here. We've added some trees. There are some existing trees that counted towards our units. And then we have broken up the access to the property into two sections. So we actually have a driveway here now with parking, and then some parallel parking, and then leaving this existing and remarking it, putting some coatings over the asphalt, repairing any of the asphalt that's deteriorating. And we have to decide whether or not we want to go before the board a zoning adjustment on the curb. But we think that we've done the best we can to make this a beautiful site. And I think if you have any other questions that you might want to ask the applicant, they, I'm sure, could answer. If you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? Or the other applicants? Mr. Trosen.
I was just wondering if somebody could kind of explain a little bit about the business and the process. And I guess what I'm particularly interested in is in regards to any odor that might be created.
You'll have to be sworn in also.
Ryan Waite, owner, Forest Sim, COO.
Can we get your address, please?
Mine is 3805 Southeast Adams Drive, Blue Springs, 64014. And I'm at 706 Joseph Street in Liberty, Missouri. Soon to be Blue Springs. Soon to be Blue Springs. The way the business is run, it's not like a human crematorium or a cemetery in any way, shape, or form. Typically, there's one, maybe two burns in a day. Anywhere from one to five animals that'll be burned in a day or cremated. The cremation typically takes anywhere from 45 minutes, depending on the size of the animal, to an hour and a half, again, depending on the size. There are single cremations. There are communal cremations, meaning more than one person can bring their pet in and have it cremated at the same time with other pets. Every city within the metro, with the exception of very few, have their own cremation system, whether it be through the city pound or a private cremation. Most of them are city-run by the pounds. So there's not a lot of room for entrepreneurial-type growth in those cities. That's what we propose to bring here. We don't have one currently in Blue Springs, so that will set us apart from some of these other communities. I think, right now, there's four or five within the city. Within the whole metro area. Just to give you kind of an idea, the city of Denver, the city of Las Vegas typically are running between seven and nine crematoriums, depending on the city size. So right now, we're undersized for the amount of crematoriums that we have here in the The crematorium that we're using is done through B&amp;L Cremations out of Florida. The reason we went with this system is it stands alone in the cremation business. They have a return-of-air retort system, and what that does is allows for an afterburner. So any, growing up, I always heard when they were cremating pets, you saw black smoke or the smell, or there was a smoke stack out back or any of that. It's completely different than that now. What it is, it's all internal. And so, any black smoke or any of that smell that would be involved in a burn actually gets blown back in, and an afterburner kicks on it, creates more heat, and it kills off any smell or any black gases that would be coming off of that. The decibels that run off that are 55 decibels. Basically, like being in a room, talking, that's 55 decibels. One of the concerns that was brought up that we've heard in the past was mercury going into the air. That is strictly with human beings, with the fillings in their teeth. There's nothing involved with mercury and pets. So nothing dangerous there. We have a stack, or, let me pull out the, maybe. Let me see if I can find the stack information. Yeah. Basically, the stack is double-winded, so any heat involved therein. It takes it down to a minimal. So therefore, at the top of the stack, we're running. Oh, it's, the air input into the stack down at the base is, can be somewhere around between 1,600 and 2,000 degrees. But then what's coming out of the stack at the top is somewhere closer to 400. And that's the air coming out of the stack. The actual exterior of the stack is well below that even. So it's far below any kind of ignition temperature for building materials. And the lining on the stack, that insulating lining, is good for about 20 years, is the guarantee on that. So it's extremely durable. The site that you'll see coming out of the stack is basically like seeing the exhaust come out of a dryer from a house. Just heat waves. Just heat waves, basically. And I'm not finding. In fact, we included in our submission packet.
Is that what you?
Yes, ma'am. There we go. Yeah. We included in our submission packet a third-party study on the exact unit that we're going to be using from B&amp;L that went over in just exhaustive detail concerning the opacity of any kind of fumes coming, or emissions coming out of the top, sound, and also pollutants. And everything that's documented therein is exactly what we're talking with you about now, well below any kind of EPA regulations. In fact, one of the reasons we're going with them is that B&amp;L has designed their retorts in such a way that even as standards had become more stringent over time, they have not needed to upgrade their units because they're so far below or so far exceeding EPA standards. So it's really a very excellent unit. As far as the burn is concerned, if there's ever any, I guess, backlash with heat or anything like that, has an automatic shutdown system within it? The, I've heard situations about, what about people driving by and seeing pets or whatnot being unloaded from cars? We actually have a garage that we can back our trailer or truck up to and unload in there. What about pets that don't get seen right away? We will actually have two freezer systems within the unit, and that way, if a pet isn't... Within the building. Within the building. If a pet isn't seen immediately, it will be seen by the next day, but it will be in a refrigeration-type system.
Ms. Banks.
I read in your, if your information, it was going to be for small pets. What's small to you? I mean, is it just for...
The retort can handle, it burns at approximately 50 pounds an hour, depending on a few variables. And it can handle up to 500 pounds at one time. But we're, the typical animal we're going to be cremating is your average household cat or dog. So it has the capacity of handling 500 pounds, but that will not be, we may be reaching that at a time when we're doing a communal cremation when the return of ashes is not requested.
Ms. Goldman.
Your clientele, Dan, are primarily the veterinary clinics?
Primarily, yeah.
But you would, you do take care of individuals?
Individuals, yeah. Word of mouth in this industry travels very fast. As we've been getting prepared for this, we've talked to Lee Summit, we've talked to Blue Springs and individuals therein, we've just heard mass amounts of need for the crematoriums. And a lot of these people have anywhere from one to four pets within their home. And everybody I've talked to have used a crematorium at one point. And therefore, within the industry, we've seen a lot of talk between individuals, where the individuals will then take the pets in. But yes, I would say probably 65% is veterinarian and 45% is an individual. Reaction when anything happens with a pet is to call the veterinarian and find out what to do from there. So, yeah, most of our work will be marketing with veterinarians.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Wallace.
If we, you say you meet the EPA standards for emissions. How do, how does the EPA monitor that? Do you have to send them your reports? Do they come out and monitor?
They come out every, I believe it's two years on that. Actually, the company, B&amp;L, that we go through, they set everything up for that with the EPA and actually the DNR as well. So all of our permits will be obtained through the DNR and the EPA, which are monitored on a, I believe it's by annual basis. Yeah, I think it's every two years that they come out.
Every two years.
Mr. Trosen.
Will you be euthanizing any animals?
Absolutely not. No, sir. No. Not veterinarians. They take care of that, and then we just do the pickup.
Any other questions? I'm a little, just, I'm curious more than anything. The jagged line down the middle of the building, I assume, is the dividing line between your business and somebody else.
Correct.
Which side are you on, and which part of the building is the furnace in?
So we, we will be...
That wasn't clear anywhere.
Sure. So this eastern portion of the building here is the 2,600 square feet that we're going to be occupying. An electrical contractor is in this section. And towards the back here is a garage bay, very large garage bay, and we're going to be placing the crematory here, somewhere along this south wall.
Okay.
So the main entrance, main entrance is up here, then there are basically offices. This is the Department of... Conservation. Yeah, Conservation Department before, and this is full of offices in here, and we're, so we're going to be occupying the office space, and the retort will be back there. South.
And what happens to the remains that are not claimed?
The remains that are not claimed, we actually have a property on Colburn Road, actually out towards Grain Valley, 50 acres, agriculture, agricultural, where we've been notified that we can go ahead and place the remains out there.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use petition? Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? Seeing no response, I will bring it back up here for discussion. Any comments on the record? I close the public hearing. Any more, any additional comments, or I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for approval of conditional use permit CUP-1-13-3800, Aspen Pet Cremations, to allow cemetery use within a L1 light industrial zoning district with the staff recommendations.
Second. Second for Mr. Graham. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Culpepper?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bartolata?
Aye.
Duhan?
Aye.
Banks?
Aye.
Trosen?
Aye.
Wallace?
Aye.
Chairman Phillips?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome to Blue Springs.
One comment, is it, small pets include Jayhawks?
And the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Lamar Advertising with an electronic billboard. And I open that public hearing. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number 1A is the section 501-090 of the Code of Ordinances on billboards. 1B is ordinance number 4421, which I assume is the one that regulates electronic billboards. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen, would you like to make a staff presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Given before this evening is a request from Lamar Advertising for a conditional use permit to allow electronic billboard along Interstate 70. The overview site location map is on the screen here. It's the small sliver of property located south out of road, just west of Northwest 22nd Street. I can show you here, zoom along here. This may be a little bit better picture, just in terms of showing you precisely what that billboard is. Zoom in here a little bit. You can see here, this is westbound. Again, it's on the south side of I-70. It is located, if you look at page four of your staff report, is located 135 feet from I-70. And it's well within the 660 feet required, in terms of, has to be at least 660 feet of, from I-70. You'll see well within that. Zoom along here, this will show you the eastbound version of it. I don't recall if this is exactly what's on that billboard, the static billboard, at the moment. But hopefully, everybody's kind of essentially familiar with that. It's kind of that, some of that overgrown area across from what used to be the Blue Springs Automotive, the Blue Roof Building, just north of 22nd and where the Baumgartner Park and the pool are at. Again, the applicant is looking to replace this existing non-electronic billboard with an electronic one. The city council adopted amendments to the UDC and the signed code to allow electronic billboards back in December. And other than this, the process with conditional use permit, applicant is required to go, have a building permit for the structure as well as administrative electronic billboard permit. It is not within 300 feet of residential zoning district. It needs to be at least 1,150 feet from another billboard on the same side of the road, and it is 1,250 feet from the closest billboard. So it, fully within all the requirements that were just recently adopted by the city council back in December. Here's kind of a schematic of what is included with the actual construction, the monopole design, and the size. I'll defer to the applicant to talk a little more detail about what actually proposed with that sign, kind of their construction timeline, and other specifics with that. Other than that, again, there's one condition that staff is recommending. Speaking with the applicant earlier, they are aware of that, and again, it's just one of those, more or less just an omission from their submittals, they are aware that it does need to have kind of a freezing capability should there be a malfunction on the billboard. Don't want something to malfunction and start, you know, flashing, scrolling, spinning, whatnot, whatnot. So they're aware of that and obviously have the technology to address that. So with that, this will be City Blue Springs' first electronic billboard. You've seen others, I'm sure, west on I-70 by the Independence Center Mall, as well as by the Independence Events Center. So it's going to be similar in... So, it's going to be similar in nature more to the, the mall billboard than maybe to the different size and scale of the Events Center billboard. So, just give you a picture of what that would be and I'll certainly stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I do have a question.
Ms. Banks.
Because I'm not quite sure, the illumination will be more like the Independence Center.
Yes.
Because the Events Center is so bright, it's almost hurts.
What I've been told with that, and again, I'm under oath, so I should need to be careful, but what I've been told from City Independence staff a number of months ago is that the Independence Events Center sign, which again is essentially under their control, City of Independence, is more on a timer that is like on a photo eye, and that's why you see the difference. The photo eye is what we require and that's what's being provided here. Again, I can't attest to what the mall billboard has, but it seems to operate more on a photo eye, much like, you know, your iPad or your cellphone or something like that has kind of auto dimming. You're in a dark room, it's not really bright, it dims down. But I believe that the other one, the Independence Events Center, is on a timer. So, if it's dark out because of a thunderstorm and it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it may, it may be very bright because it's set to more of a daytime setting. So, again, I'm just speaking from what I've been told several months ago, but that, that can kind of give you a visual difference between why a photo eye is more important than simply a timer that goes along based on the time of day rather than actually the lighting conditions.
Well, I was just wondering because it's so bright, you almost get hypnotized just to look at it, you know?
That's a very good point. That's why this, as well as electronic reader board portion of the Sign Code that city adopted just a little while ago, both require the photo eye. So, like the monument sign at Point of Hope Church, even the new Quick Trip, North Seven has a photo eye.
Okay.
And you can tell too, you know, it's a dark, kind of stormy day and it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it is dimmer than what would normally be in a bright day at the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? And again, you'll have to be sworn in.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask you about giving this case to the case of... Yes. My name is Bob Fessler. I'm the Vice President and Missouri Territory Manager for Lamar Advertising. We reside at, our office is at 7108 East 48 Terrace in Kansas City, Missouri. I'm here to apply and ask for your permission to install a digital sign and I can address some of the concerns that I just heard. And I'll, I'll start with Ms. Banks' question. There are two things that happen with a billboard company versus an on-premise sign. With the billboard company, we have to meet federal guidelines because it is an interstate. Then we have to meet state guidelines and then we have to meet city guidelines. In the case of the Independence Center, Events Center, it's considered an on-premise sign. So, there's no guidelines except what the city requires. So, we are required to put mechanisms in the sign that at certain times of the day or certain brightnesses, it's correct, there is a dimming system inside the sign that, that will, will drive back to so many candle foots or so many nits, there's different terminologies, but, but it will control it to bring it back down. So, if you're driving around the city, we have 23 digital signs in the five-county area, you will definitely notice the difference between our signs and some of the other ones. And I did want to just tell you some of the things about what Lamar has done. Lamar has been in the forefront of digital signs dating back to 2003. I think we operate across the state now. We've got about 65 across the country. I think we've got about 2,000. But early on, the Lamar Corporation is run by the Lamar family since 1902. And the family's been very active in community involvement. But one of the things that they decided they wanted to do early on was, we connected immediately with Amber Alerts and missing for, missing and exploited children. So, if a child goes missing within three hours of this zip code, they immediately override our system and they put up the message and hopefully a picture or whatever they might have. So, so the board goes static just for that message for three hours, once, once they know something's going on in that area. If they think that the child is still in the area, they will keep it static longer. But based on the information they have, they just override our systems. Last year, with what happened down in Joplin, we did the same thing with FEMA. FEMA now has the capability of going in, overriding our systems and putting in, unfortunately, we couldn't do anything prior to the tornado, but immediately, within three hours, they were, had emergency assistance numbers up for people to call to where they could get assistance and do things like that. And then most recently, we started doing some things with the National Weather Center if they knew a storm's coming. Right now, we're running some things with Channel 9 where they're telling people to check into the news for another upcoming storm, which we're all looking forward to. But we're doing those kind of things. So, they have the capability, we call it an EAS, we have seven available slots to sell on a billboard. We dedicate one to EAS, which is emergency assistance, and they, they can override the system at any time. So, it's a, I think that's one of the best things we do. The other thing we do, I'm going to say this, please don't hold it against me. I moved here from Ohio about 11 years ago with Lamar, but I moved to Lee's Summit. I guess I didn't know any better at that time.
[laughing]
We, we do an awful lot, we have three digitals in Lee's Summit and we do an awful lot with the city in promoting the schools, in promoting, you know, civic, civic events within the city. And we would most definitely do that here. When, when the signs are unsold, I would like to tell you they're sold 100% of the time, but they're just not. We, we will definitely, I know you guys have a big festival here every year and those kind of things, we could carve out time and, and put them on the, on the signs, so. And I'd like to answer any questions you have about the structure or what we have to do. As far as the structure itself, this one actually doesn't need too much work. We have a, a gentleman that's our engineer out of Chicago that designs and builds all of our structures. The box itself will come in two pieces and on the ground, we'll mount the top to the bottom and then we'll lift it. The box weighs about 5,000 pounds. What we will be doing is we'll be gusseting the connection points. We'll be making sure that the, where it attaches to the uprights of the structure, we'll reinforce the connection points on the sign and then we'll reinforce the, the torsion tube to ensure that it can handle the weight. But that's really, you won't notice much of a difference when you look at the billboard, it will look the same. It will just have a box mounted on the front. The box is, it's, it's got a black cover on it. And then the, the sign itself is made up of a whole bunch of 12 by 12 modules. So, if a module goes out, we actually pop the module out of the face, take it out, replace it and put a new one in, and there's just two wires that connect on the back of it. So, early on, a story I like to tell in Kansas City, when we put up our first one on I-35, somebody shot it because they thought they were going to blow it up. Well, they shot it and they blew out one of the modules, thank God, but we just replaced the module and put a new one in. So, but there's really not much that's going to have to happen to the structure. Now, what's going to happen, should you decide to pass this tonight, we have to go back to the state now and apply with the state because this is considered a conforming out of standard billboard. And then the state will approve it. It meets all the state regulations, but we have to go through another process. So, my guess is by the time we go through all this and we get everything we have with the box, we're looking at 60 to 90 days before we'll actually be on the street. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? How is the box controlled?
We have a national operating center in, in our corporate office in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and it's monitored 24/7. So, we have people that actually sit there and the boards scroll across TV screens and they, they view them. It's guaranteed that they view each sign that we have at least one time every two hours. But they continually scroll them and watch for anything that might go wrong. And then we have within our office the capability of viewing, what we call viewing live. We can go on to any, any one of them and we can, we can view it. Now, the artwork itself, when somebody buys it, we load it here locally and we put the art up. And then we allow our clients to load their own art, but we hire a company out of, I don't even know where they're out of, but we hire a company that we pay them to view the artwork before it goes up to ensure the content. So, yeah. Yeah, it's my worst nightmare, trust me. I hope that answered your question.
And then, then it's transmitted by radio or...
It's a, it's a, we, we have wireless.
Wireless.
It's all wireless. We used to do hardwire to the signs, but everything's wireless now.
The, the monitoring, is that, are they monitoring the signal that's going out to the sign or there's actually a camera mounted that looks at the sign?
We have a webcam on every sign. Yes, exactly.
Ms. Colpepper?
Just a quick question on maintenance.
Yes.
There's some company locally that takes care of your maintenance so that there's no delay in repairing, should it be needed?
We actually have two certified technicians on our staff and Lamar's policy is that they have to be at the sign within three hours.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Or is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against it? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back up here for comments on the record. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any additional comments and/or a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Colpepper?
I would move for approval of the conditional use permit CUP-113-3809, subject to any staff comments.
I have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Culpepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhan?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Chairman Phillips?
Aye. That has been unanimously approved. Thank you. And we look forward to seeing the sign. Okay. That brings us to any other business? Mr. Allen, is there anything you'd like to bring up?
Yes, thank you for everybody who was able to attend Thursday evening's event. We have, I think, eight signed up to attend, so that should be, will be the largest turnout there. As I've, I've shared, Mr. Phillips, I've shared your comment. I did not attribute it to you. I apologize, but, or maybe you'll thank me, I didn't. To, to the Lee's Summit, I said, I thank Lee's Summit for hosting a Blue Springs training event because it turns out we're going to have the largest group there and it's going to be at Lee's Summit. So, should be a good event this Thursday night. The other thing I did want to mention just real briefly, the next meeting, we don't have any specific agenda items at this point, but we will be having a meeting as our kickoff for the comp plan. So, the conference of plan will have the consultants here. We're going to kind of do a quick kind of visioning exercise and kind of intro to everything. And as a part of that, we will be kind of launching the steering committee and I'll be beginning with Chairman Phillips to kind of talk about, I guess, everybody get your names in to Karen, me, Jim, Chairman Phillips, if you want to be a part of that steering committee. We have room right now, we're looking at four from the planning commission on the steering committee. That does not mean we're limited to just four people participating, it's just they're the ones who are going to be kind of the, the go-to to be a part of meetings and more of a regular kind of involvement. Everybody will be involved one way or the other, but this is kind of a more regular, specific involvement. So, if you can get names to us next week or two, just kind of think about, before the next time, obviously, next meeting. Hopefully this week, if you can get names in that you'd be interested in being on the steering committee versus maybe like a, a subcommittee or, you know, kind of a sidebar group or part of the larger discussion. If you want to be specific on the steering committee, let us know this week. Anyway, regardless, we'll have the kickoff meeting with the planning commission at the next meeting, March 11th.
I look forward to it.
So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be a full agenda, but it won't be a, you know, regular application items. It'll be a full agenda just for the kickoff, so. Plan on 45 minutes to an hour, probably.
I also would like to remind everybody that on March 18th is the annual chili lunch to benefit Downtown Alive and invite everybody to come. If you don't have a ticket, you can get one from any of the downtown merchants. They're $8 in advance, $10 at the door. Look forward, that's always a great event for everybody to come down and meet everybody and get to network a little bit. Anything else that anybody needs to bring up? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and advise everybody to please be careful going home tonight and I'll lay tomorrow.
Still moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.